And welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Tuesday, November 18th, 2003. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public, and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public who are unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage, or heard via council phone. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Cardenas Garcetti, Grolhan Labanj, Ludlow Misakowski, Parks, Perry Reyes Smith, Vi Regosa, Weiss, Zain, Padilla, 11 members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, colleagues. This being Tuesday, the first meeting of the week, as is customary, we do have a salute to the flag. We also have one presentation scheduled for today by Councilmember Garcetti. Let me turn it over to him at this time. Mr. Garcetti.
If everybody will please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Welcome back, Mr. President, as well. Please place your hand over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning, colleagues. Mr. President, thank you for the recognition, Mr. President. Colleagues, before I came to City Council, I was very involved and served on the California Board of Human Rights Watch, really the premier human rights organization in the world alongside other organizations like Amnesty International, who fight for the basic human rights and civil liberties of all human beings, no matter where they live, where they were born, who they are, what language they speak, what religion they profess, what color their skin may be, or their age. And every year, here in Los Angeles, we play host to a tremendous dinner that honors some of the folks that are on the front lines of human rights around the world. They may be in our backyard, as we are about to hear, or they may be an ocean away. You'll recall last year, we gave some certificates to some of the folks that were here from around the world, and this year, it's the 25th anniversary of the Voices for Justice Dinner and of Human Rights Watch. And on the 25th anniversary of Human Rights Watch, which was founded as Helsinki Watch many years ago, to give folks a voice in the former Soviet Union and throughout the world about their basic civil liberties, this organization has expanded since to really have a presence and a voice in all continents, in all countries, an indigenous voice to help those voices that are fighting for equality, to have those voices amplified, but also to make sure that government leaders, like those yourselves here today, never can turn a blind eye or close their ears off to what is happening in their own countries with their own citizens. We have two of the three advocates who are being honored tonight for their human rights work with us. The first that I'd like to detail a little bit about her work is Dr. Aida Saif El-Dawla from Egypt. And Dr. El-Dawla is a founding member and is chairperson of the Egyptian Association Against Torture, association that works with Egyptians to provide legal, medical, and social services to ensure that victims of torture and their families receive support. They also monitor and report cases of torture in Egypt, and they also advocate for prosecutions and legal and social change. The doctor is a professor of psychiatry at Cairo's Ain Shams University, and in 1993, she, with three others, formed the El Nadeem Center for Psychological Rehabilitation of Victims of Violence, the first and to date the only organization of its kind in Egypt. El Nadeem initially focused services for men, women, and children tortured by Egyptian police and security forces, but later developed an independent program for the treatment of female victims of all forms of violence. And I know that we marked our own Domestic Violence Awareness Month here just a few weeks ago in Los Angeles in these chambers. In 1984, she also helped found the new Women's Research Center, which, unlike other Egyptian groups at the time, challenged both the government's incrementalist approach to women's rights and religious fundamentalist efforts to deny women the most basic freedoms. And as Egypt has recently witnessed further restrictions of the right of organization, freedom of expression, and peaceful assembly and demonstration, the doctor and El Nadeem Center have been on the front lines documenting the torture of anti-war demonstrators in March and April of this year, assisting in their legal defense, and even demonstrating in front of the Egyptian Prosecutor General's Office to demand medical care for those still in prison. And, Doctor, it is an honor to have you here today, and we, from Los Angeles, want to praise the great work that you inspire us with. Closer to home, we have a second advocate, Javier Staring, who is a Los Angeles native who is being honored internationally by Human Rights Watch. He's a Catholic lay chaplain who has worked to improve the conditions right here, colleagues, in our backyard, in which juvenile offenders are incarcerated. He has served as a chaplain at the Central Juvenile Hall here in Los Angeles since 1995 and is now co-director of Detention Ministries for the Archdiocese of Los Angeles, a position he has held since January of this year. He also serves as policy director for Faith Communities for Families and Children, a Los Angeles-based area interfaith coalition that advocates on behalf of youths in the juvenile justice system and child welfare systems. Shocked by some of the abusive conditions I think we all became familiar with in the press recently, on behalf of youths in the juvenile justice system here in Los Angeles, and specifically the Los Angeles Men's Central Jail, where young people were subject to not rehabilitation, but being part of a system in which they were not rehabilitated, but instead, as youth offenders were being housed with adult offenders. He recently mobilized and led a local coalition to press for change. And after the coalition publicized abuses in the jail, the Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors declared the Men's Central Jail was unfit for detainees under the age of 18, something you would think would be basic here, but that took Javier's courage to speak out. And it's that courage, his decision to speak out, that we honor today, and it came at some risk to his professional reputation. When he spoke in front of the jail at a protest, in questions whether the jail itself, the conditions, contributed possibly to two may suicide attempts by young people, the Sheriff's Department, in an apparent act of retaliation, revoked his clearance to minister to youths inside the jail. And Javier believes that his holistic approach to direct ministry, education, and advocacy can better the lives of incarcerated youth and their families. Those constituents, colleagues, that we represent, and who oftentimes are just looking for somebody to believe in them and to give them that act of faith that Javier does. So we'd like to honor him as well today. So we have two other certificates that I'd like to just mention briefly. One is for Tewan Gongloe, who is from Liberia, a human rights defender, and you can go to humanrightswatch, hrw.org, to find out more information about each one of these. But also, I think, somebody many of you in these chambers know, Jane Olson, who has really been a pioneer with Human Rights Watch, serves on the National Board, and who is being honored tonight at the 25th anniversary of Human Rights Watch at the Voices of Justice Dinner. Excuse me. So with that, I would like to present these awards to Dr. El-Dawla. First of all, if you'll please give her a round of applause for her great and pioneering And Javier Staring, right here in our backyard, for his great work at the county jail and promoting the rights of all the young people here in Los Angeles. Please give Javier a round of applause as well. If I could ask your attention, colleagues, we're just going to hear a quick word from our human rights advocates.
Good morning. I wish to thank all of you for this opportunity and for honoring us in the LA City Council. I very much appreciate your solidarity with our work, and I think that this kind of solidarity is what it takes to realize and achieve the enforcement of human rights principles in all parts of the world. Thank you very much.
I would also like to thank the City Council for this honor. More importantly, what I want to mention is that although the County Board of Supervisors did pass a resolution on July 8th to move youth out of Men's Central Jail, only four youth have been moved. Twenty-eight youth, 28 kids are still housed at Men's County Jail in the worst conditions that I've ever seen. And I've been to Pelican Bay, I've been to the Shoal in Pelican Bay. What we're doing to the kids at Men's County Jail and housing them, we would not do it to our pets. We would be prosecuted if we housed our pets in the way that the 28 youth are being housed there today, and that's less than a mile away. Thank you again, Mr. President, and colleagues, for allowing me to make this presentation on a Tuesday instead of usual Friday. We think of human rights often as something which has to be fought for and defended an ocean away. Javier's work reminds us that sometimes it is just literally next door, and for your bravery, for the bravery of all of our human rights advocates being honored tonight, and for the great work of Human Rights Watch, I thank you all for your attention and for your ongoing commitment to honoring the human rights that every single human being deserves.
We recognize Mr. Labanj for an introduction.
Thank you. Ms. Perry, if you could join me, please. I'd appreciate it. We have a very special artist from Japan, as you know, members, just this weekend in Ms. Perry's district at the fabulous Los Angeles Convention Center, there was Japan Expo 2003. And Wako Kido is a famous artist from our sister city of Nagoya, Japan. And when I made my remarks during the ceremony, she ran up to me to tell her of the love of the people of Nagoya to the love of the people of Los Angeles and the love of artists. I just wanted to welcome her. This is the beautiful gift poster that promotes the 2005 Art Expo in Archie, Japan. And I'd also like to call on Hideo Kurabawa, who's the director of the Nagoya International Business Information Center here in Los Angeles, to say a few words about this very special artist. And I'll call on you in a second. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for giving me this opportunity. I'm Hideo Kurabawa, coming from the city of Nagoya. As you know, the city of Los Angeles and the city of Nagoya is sister cities. We are the oldest sister cities each other, and we have 45th anniversary next year. Ms. Wako Kido is a very famous artist from Nagoya. She made this official poster of World Expo 2005. The World Expo is a very big event in Japan. It's a national project of Japan, and for this present, 119 countries will take part in at this event. It will be located at the east hills of Nagoya. Please plan to visit the sister city, Nagoya, at this opportunity. Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you very much. I appreciate it. And Jane, would you say a few words on behalf of Little Tokyo and all the--
Thanks so much, Tom, and to Madam Kido. Thank you so much for your lovely presentation and your artistic expression, and for coming and sharing a bit of your culture here in Los Angeles at the Los Angeles Convention Center. And also, thank you to Mr. Kurabawa, Director, for coming here today and helping us to give recognition to Madam Kido. And I think Madam Kido is going to say a few words also? All right. Thank you so much.
My name is Wako Kido. Hello, Los Angeles. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Let's get a picture right here with the art. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Labanj. Madam Clerk, first order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Garcetti moves, and Mr. Ludlow seconds.
Mandatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Zain moves, and Ms. Misakowski seconds.
On the regular agenda, Mr. President, items noticed for public hearings. Items 1 through 5 are street lighting protests. Council should continue the hearings and ordinances to December 5th.
Colleagues, items 1 through 5 now before us. We do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on these items. Public hearings are open, and without objection, continue to December 5th. Next item, please.
Next items are building and safety confirmations of assessments, items 6 through 12. The department has advised that items 7, 9, and 12 can be received and filed in as much as the assessments have been paid.
Okay, colleagues, 6 through 12 now before us. We have requests to receive and file 7, 9, and 12. I also do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on these items. Public hearings are open, public hearings are closed. Do we have any requests for specials?
Excuse me, Mr. President. On item number 10, the department has also requested that the assessment amount be changed to $3,783.59.
Okay, council will consider, without objection, the request from the department on the amendment for item number 10, and to receive and file 7, 9, and 12. Colleagues, do we have any specials on these items? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
Item number 13 is also a public hearing item.
I'm sorry, Miss, 14 special?
Okay, get there in a second. Item 13 now before us.
And the communication from the Chair of Plumb has been submitted, and it is an appeal in Council District 4.
Okay, colleagues, item 13 now before us. Mr. Labanj, did you wish to call this item special?
Yeah, no, I just want to ask this question. Did staff make the changes that are necessary? If you could hold us on the desk for a moment.
Let's call it special, Mr. Labanj. We'll be waiting for staff to get here. Item 13 called special by Mr. Labanj. Item 14 called special by Mr. Ludlow. Next item, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held, items 15 through 22.
Ms. Misakowski calls item 15 special. Colleagues, items 15 through 22 now before us.
18.
18 called special by Mr. Parks. Public hearings have been held on these items. A motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearings. Any other specials? Items 15 through 22. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items 23 through 44, and 10 votes are required for consideration.
Without objection, the council shall consider items 23 through 44 today. I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on these items. Public hearings are open, public hearings are closed. Mr. Weiss, welcome back.
Welcome back, Mr. President. Can we continue item 44 for a week, please?
Members, request to continue item 44 for one week. New hearing date would be November 25th. Without objection. Other requests or specials on items 23 through 43? Mr. Ludlow.
Yes.
43 called special by Mr. Ludlow. Any other specials? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, is closed session, item number 45. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Let's hold all closed session matters on the desk. Next item.
On the supplemental agenda, item number 46 is an item for which public hearing has been held.
Colleagues, item 46 now before us. Public hearing has been held. Motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearings. Any members wishing to call item 46 special? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next items, 47 through 50, are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes for consideration.
Okay, without objection, the council shall consider items 47 through 50 today. Members, we do have a card in item 48. We'll call that special. On the balance of the items, we do not have requests from members of the public to address the council. Public hearings are open, public hearings are closed. Any members wishing to call specials, 47, 49, or 50? 47, 49, or 50? Any specials? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
Going back to the items called special, item number 13 was called special by Councilmember Labanj.
Mr. Labanj. Item 13.
Thank you very much. Members, this is just a small clerical error, and if the city attorney could rule on this, in the report, it has changed the number of-- what we need to do is change the number from 173 to 123. Is that correct? That's correct. So is that all right, Mr. City Attorney? It's a clerical error. Does anyone from the planning department here need to speak to this? I just want the record to show it's 123 units.
Is that reflected in the ordinance?
It's reflected in the ordinance. It's the ordinance-- where's the ordinance? Do you have it there? It's reflected in the ordinance that way. And as the city attorney looks at that to make sure we do this thing right, because it's 123 units, I truly want to thank the La Brea Hancock Park Homeowners Association, or La Brea Hancock Homeowners Association, and Fred Pickle. I want to thank you for your work, and also truly want to thank Chris Payne and Avalon Bay for working, and also want to thank Ed Reyes for his work as the head of planning in trying to balance the needs between neighborhood and community and the need for housing. This is a project that I believe will be an asset to the community and balanced with the residential district. I want to thank you, but I want to make sure they're okay on that.
Just a point of clarification, I'm sorry, Mr. Labanj. It should be 173?
It should be 123.
123 is what's on the report.
From 173. Good. All right, so it's on the report that way that they have it was cleared. Members, I thank you. I ask for an eye vote, and forthwith to the mayor.
Okay, members, without objection, that's a technical amendment to item 13. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on item 13 as amended. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is approved. Forthwith, please. Next item, item 14. Mr. Ludlow.
President, on item number 14, members, I'm rising to-- I want to do a verbal motion to deny this, and one of the things that I think many of us have dealt with on the council is trying to find ways to improve our districts vis-à-vis putting some pressure on institutions that really have become a magnet for blight, a magnet for crime. One of the challenges in my district is trying to maintain a certain quality of life, working to try to make sure that those establishments that are currently providing a quality of living or a certain type of service, that they don't feel compelled that distributing alcohol is the only way to make a profit in Los Angeles. And so, colleagues, I'm asking for your support to deny this application, and would ask for a second on that if I-- I think I need a second on that. So, members, I heard a second, and I ask for-- and I vote on my motion.
Okay, that's an amending motion. Is there any objection? We did hear a second. Are other members wishing to be heard on item 14? If not, then we'll consider item 14 as amended. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That's approved. Next item, please.
Item number 15 was called special by Councilmember Misakowski.
Ms. Misakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members, this is the issue that we have been grappling with over the last couple of months, and specifically, a few weeks ago, is the issue of the Adult Entertainment Ordinance and the successful presenting of a referendum, giving us some options. Last time we were together, we adopted-- or put the ordinances on the table, one to call the special election for March '05, and another to rescind the Adult Entertainment or the Lap Dancing Ordinance, as it was called. During the last week and a half, there have been intensive, intensive discussions with members of the community, with members of the industry, and with an attempt to look at options and yet improve the city's basic permitting structure as it deals with adult entertainment. At the same time, with the possibility that we might still have that option of calling the election in March of '05, we have circulated, and I want to thank those members of the council and throughout the city who have signed a ballot argument to be ready to be presented. Members, today, I'm going to ask the city attorney to come forward, and one of the things-- I'm going to do two things. I'm going to continue this item until Friday, but also ask that we instruct the city attorney to present to us on Friday, which will then be the final day that we can act, an alternate ordinance that does deal with adult entertainment regulation and permitting, and issues which is both substantially different from the one that had been the subject of the referendum, but will cure some constitutional infirmities in our current ordinance, will specifically define and delineate things that will and will not be allowed in our adult entertainment businesses, and will institutionalize an annual permit review, and that that annual permit review be subjected to consideration of whether or not there are citations and a well-run establishment during that review period in the previous year. But that ordinance can't be acted on today. If we ask the city attorney to present it on Friday, we can act on it that day, rescind the existing ordinance, and note and file the election. We are very, very close, and I think we've been in substantial agreement by all parties that this is the appropriate course. There still needs to be some wordsmithing done, some technical details, hopefully it'll just be down to that, with the ordinance that will be presented by the city attorney on Friday. So, Ms. Cullen, can you indicate, one, can you have an ordinance ready for us on Friday and feel comfortable that that still can be done within the timeline that is prescribed under our referendum alternatives, and be able to be resolved by Friday?
Thank you. Yes, we can have an ordinance prepared and ready for you to act on Friday. That ordinance will reflect the negotiated changes. The law requires, in these circumstances, that what you adopt once you repeal the-- Honey, pull the microphone closer. That what you adopt once you repeal the challenged ordinance is essentially different. This is not-- will not be totally different, but we hope with working with the proponents, we will have isolated those issues which were of most concern to them, and we think then we will have an argument that it is different enough that we can-- that the risk will be low of a challenge. And yes, we can have that Friday.
All right, members, the city attorney-- so one is my motion, I hope I can get a second to instruct the city attorney to present an alternate ordinance, and Friday, hopefully, we will be able to resolve this. If not, on Friday, we still have the option then to call the election. But on Friday, I hope to be able to explain with the city attorney and have both the community and the industry representatives be able to stand up, talk about the details of the ordinance, and indicate that they are willing to accept that, and create a new definition of control, regulation, and appropriate permitting with clarity in the city of Los Angeles in these kinds of businesses. So, thank you for that, Mr. Weiss, and on Friday, we checked, there's only one member absent, so I think we will be able to resolve it on Friday and move forward constructively with good intent and a good, strong ordinance that will regulate this industry in our city, which I think all are in agreement is appropriate. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Misakowski. Are there members wishing to be heard on this item? If not, we do have that request to continue to Friday. Without objection. So ordered. Next item, please.
Item number 18 was called special by Councilmember Parks.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Could I have staff come up on this item, please? Thank you very much. I would like just to have staff give a brief overview. One of the issues that prompted this motion was that we've been doing business with WorldCom even while they have been going forward in a significant bankruptcy and recently ordered by the court for a $750 million settlement. And so, not only does it impact our business relationship, but it also appears that we have several of our pension systems that have invested in their stock, which may cause us to have some litigation, and I thought we needed to bring this to light because right on the heels of that, we're in the same business upcoming with the amount of fraud that's going on in the mutual fund arena. And so, it appears as though, particularly in the pension area, this city might be the victims of a variety of these funds and the variety of fraud throughout the nation. And so, I thought we needed a brief overview to let us know-- And so, I thought we needed a brief overview to let us know what the current status is.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Parks. Liza Lowry, ITA. I'm going to discuss a small piece of what Councilmember Parks mentioned, and then Bill Kreitz from the CIO office maybe will give you a fuller picture. Right now, the city does purchase its long-distance services from WorldCom as part of the state of California's CalNet contract. It is quite economical to do that. The billing is easy because it comes along with our local billing, so administratively it's easier, and we have not experienced any service problems. But at the prompting of ITGS, and because other questions have been asked about the things that are going on with WorldCom, ITA has begun looking into our options so that we can look at what other contract vehicles we might use, or what other options the city council has to consider, what those costs would be, and what it would, how it would impact the city administratively to perhaps leave the CalNet contract and have a contract that's independent of our current local billing. There are options that exist, and we will be presenting those in response to the motion before you.
Could we have the city attorney give us an overview of what is contemplated on potential litigation regarding the issues dealing with the bond funds?
Thank you, Councilman Michael R. Wilkinson. I'm a deputy city attorney. We are currently in litigation with, we have an outside law firm, Milberg Weis, representing two of our three funds who have suffered significant losses in bonds, and that's currently, it was filed in LA Superior Court, but it's been removed to federal district court where it is right now in New York. And that is ongoing right now for the bonds, bond losses.
And have we merged the three pension issues with police fire and, what is it, Lasers? Have those lawsuits been merged as we talked about in ITGS?
I don't know really much what you mean by merged.
As far as them, in a concerted effort to go forward on this, or are they dealing with them individually?
The, the, this involves only the bond losses that I'm speaking of right here.
Yes.
They're considered separate lawsuits for the fire and police pension department and the Lasers, which is the civilian department, but these are not related in any direct way to the SEC action that you referred to earlier, which is in bankruptcy court, nor is it related to, there's also a class action that is pending as well in New York, but that's a separate action.
Okay. But is the city attorney involved in pulling together our citywide effort on these two potential lawsuits? Because that's what we, I think, asked for in the committee.
Okay. I, I don't know that it's, it's a, a joint action. I am aware of matters in the, in the bankruptcy court, but that's, again, not, it's not merged, it's a separate, separate action, but I am aware of that as well.
Okay. If I could ask the city attorney to get with our pension funds and also with the, the, both civilian and the sworn pension funds, to make sure there's a coordinated effort. And one of the things, just to forewarn you, very shortly, we're going to do a motion on a similar issue dealing with some of the mutual funds that fraud is being reported on a daily basis, which I assume a, a large portion of some of our city funds are invested in those national mutual funds. And so, it's something that will be forthcoming.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues, appreciate the report. Just wanted to bring to your attention that, number one, that ITA is looking at this issue of addressing the concerns of doing business with a company that has been identified in major fraud. We're spending $16 million a year with WorldCom for our services, which then pumps up their books that then allowed our pension funds to go out and invest in that company, which we now find they've lost money because of that fraud. And so, we've asked from the ITGS committee that the city attorney work with those two pension funds to make sure there's a coordinated effort, and then also to ensure that we come back with ITA to tell us about what are our options, that if we want to, if we end up continuing that process with the WorldCom, that we do it knowingly and consciously versus continuing to give them this large sum of money in a company that's shown that their credibility is suspect. So, I ask for an eye vote on item 18.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Are there members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 43 called special by council member Ludlow.
Mr. Ludlow.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, as you know, we last week entered into, entered a motion to ask this council to go on record supporting binding arbitration for the, in an effort to try to bring the MTA strike to a close. And this strike, which went into its 35th day Sunday, has impacted every aspect, every district in the city. Those of us who have been out there talking to constituents who have children that have not been able to get to school, seniors who have not been able to get to medical appointments, businesses which have not been able to get employees to their places of, of work, it's really grabbed the city and strangled us. 400,000 riders on a daily basis have not been able to access their buses. I appreciate the fact that this council was poised to step up and support a motion introduced by myself and council member Viragosa. But as all of us saw yesterday, there's good news. I wanted to take this opportunity to say a couple of things about this weekend. In particular, I want to take a moment to commend my colleague, council member Antonio Viragosa, who, as you know, was one of the four of us that were forced to recuse ourselves as a result of an MTA policy that was interpreted incorrectly. We subsequently went to court to challenge that policy, at the, at the suggestion of great members of, of our staff, and I want to acknowledge my policy director Sharon Delugich, who's running around here today, for her great wisdom and perseverance and conviction that that policy was not right, it was not being interpreted correctly, and a judge in Los Angeles Superior Court agreed with our attorneys and Sharon Delugich, and allowed four of us to go back on to the MTA board and participate in negotiations. I think that decision was critical, because in essence, what it allowed to happen was a new source of energy. And by the end of Sunday, that source of energy clearly was my colleague from the 14th Council District who was able to, I think, bring the leadership of the MTA, leadership of the ATU, together to look at a way to bring this crisis to an end. And in the end, as of this morning, you saw on the news, Chairman Yaroslavski was out in the bus yards congratulating mechanics and bus drivers and riders and, and everyone, thanking them for their patience and encouraging them to take advantage of the fact that the MTA service is back rolling. And I wanted to also say thank you to our mayor, Mayor James Hahn, who supported us in that lawsuit, who has supported us throughout this process, did a great job of convening meetings in his office, traveling to Pomona, and also council member Tom Labange, who serves on the MTA and throughout this process has been a voice of reason, and has been very, very supportive in terms of working with both sides as well. So, members, I want to ask that we receive and file this item, and again, salute my two colleagues here and the mayor, but in particular, a real leader who showed great guts in getting in the middle of this, knowing that he could lose, but he didn't. And Antonio, we're all grateful for your leadership, your work, and thank you so much. Members, I ask that we receive and file.
Okay. Members' motion to receive and file this item. I have next on the queue Mr. Viragosa, followed by Mr. Labange, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Cardenas, and Mr. Weiss.
Yes, I too am very grateful on behalf of the 500,000 riders of this city that this strike is now over. I'm also grateful to this council, many of you, when Mr. Ludlow and myself went around the horseshoe and asked for your support, you quickly said, yes, we need a third party to resolve this. This is the way we need to go. All of the players in this battle, if you will, knew about this motion, and I think it played a role in moving the parties to mediating and negotiating this to an ultimate positive resolution. Let me also, you know, I know it sounds like a love fest, but let me also acknowledge Martin, being too humble here. Councilmember Ludlow was the one, when I challenged the general counsel on the issue of our ability to participate, he and Sharon said, you know, we got to sue, we got to sue. And I went along with that advice because I knew it was good advice, and we went to court, and we were able to vindicate our right to participate. Also want to thank the mayor, because the mayor brought the parties early on and said, let's sit down and go back to face-to-face negotiations. Councilmember Labange was there with us early on, saying, let's, let's talk, everyone, you know, he's the big guy with the hug and always there to reach out to the other side. So, a lot of people played a role. Chairman Yaroslavski, at the end of the day, was the crucial player here, let's make no mistake about it, and our colleague, the chairman. And let me also thank Neil Silver. You know, I've said from the beginning that I don't know how you demonize a man who's fighting for his health care and fighting for the health care of his members and his family. This issue of health care in America is, goes well beyond the city council, the MTA board. We see the grocer's strike, we see all across the country, many of the union management conflicts or conflicts around health care. And all of us, as policymakers, are going to have to stand up for the idea that in this country where we spend more on health care, that health care is a right, not a privilege, and that the only issue should be how we figure out how we deliver health care to every single American. I think if we were able to do that, we'd go a long way to resolving these kinds of conflicts. I thank council members Ludlow, Labange, the mayor, and all, Zev Yaroslavski and Neil Silver for ultimately bringing a resolution to this matter.
Mr. Labange.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I just wanted to stand, truly, members, we all at certain times have opportunity to serve at a greater level, and Antonio Viragosa and Martin Ludlow, over this last weekend, worked throughout the day and night to try to bring parties together. And I just certainly wanted to stand and salute my colleagues who fought to get back on the board and was welcomed by the board because they added a perspective. So much of life is personal, whether you could personally bring the power of influence together, and these gentlemen certainly did. I want to also thank our mayor, Mayor Hahn, who about 10 days ago called a meeting late in the afternoon in his office to get everybody around the table on the city side and the heads of both unions to understand the issues clearly, to understand the positions, and see how we could go forward. But I also do want to thank, and I, Mr. Yaroslavski, and all the other members of the MTA board who are trying to balance it out. As Mr. Yaroslavski said, everyone's a loser, and when you have a strike. But out of this strike, we got to make winners of everybody, we got to find a way to make sure we improve the service for all people of Los Angeles, we also got to find a way to improve the joint labor management between the MTA and the workers of the MTA, because different than the city experience that we have here, who we seem to have a better relationship with our employee organizations, that doesn't seem to be the case there, because they've had 10 strikes in 40 years, which is an awful inconvenience to the people that we're so deserved. But I also want to thank the unfortunate storm that took place that Wednesday, because during the strike, we were all locked up in a meeting in the hall of administration, no windows. We missed the electrical storm, but we felt very quickly how tough it is for people to be transit dependent, to have winter on, to have people missing school, to have people missing doctor's appointments, people missing their ability to get around. But truly, members, and, you know, and as we come into Thanksgiving, we could be very thankful on this council to have a great councilman from the 10th District and Martin Ludlow, and a great one from the 14th and Antonio Viragosa, because those guys worked real, real hard, and our mayor, and I want to say Jim Hahn again, worked real, real hard to bring everybody together and make this thing happen. So, I'm just pleased to play a little part. I, I like it, because I am a little, I like to see a balance on that, and I know, we all work it together. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. It's always great to follow one of the greatest cheerleaders for Los Angeles, Councilmember Labange, and our colleagues, Councilmember Ludlow, and Councilmember Viragosa, and our mayor, Jim Hahn, and Zev Yaroslavski for his leadership in bringing this together, and Neil Silver's. But I wanted to take the time to thank ALA Department of Transportation. They stepped up. They brought out the shuttles, they went out, maximized their routes, they tried to fill in as much as they could during these bleak weeks. And I speak on behalf of the thousands of people in my district who depend on transportation. And one of the end, the ending of one of our meetings, I talked about the phone calls I was getting about one gentleman who lost his job, his livelihood, he had just gotten his baby, he was newlywed, couple of years, and he was frantic and despair. Seniors upon seniors were calling us. When I go out to my community meetings, they were desperate. So, on behalf of all of those thousands of people, I want to thank you for your great job, for stepping up, for Mayor Jim Hahn for doing his, what he could to make this happen, and again, it's a heartfelt thanks, I can't tell you how much of a difference it makes to those people that are truly transit dependent. Thank you very much.
Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to point out that at the heart of the MTA community is the city of Los Angeles, and the city of Los Angeles has a responsibility and a right to defend and to be there for its constituency. And for a while, we were not at the table, and now we were, and we have a result that is going to relieve hundreds of thousands of people who depend on public transportation. And in addition to that, we found out, Angelinos, we found out as a region, that every single person is affected by public transportation. If you were on our streets or on our freeways over the last few weeks, you found out that the fact that someone goes from the San Fernando Valley to clean somebody's house in the west side of Los Angeles and glad to have that job, wasn't able to get to work, or the fact of the matter is that they added to more traffic on our roads and freeways, affected every single one of us. And you better believe, whether it's health care, whether it's wages, whatever the issue is, it affects us all. And I just want to say, it was time, and thank God that on this Monday, the buses started rolling again, and the city of Los Angeles was at the table, and we should always be, remain at the table. And I'm appreciative of a judge who said that we deserve and have a responsibility to be at that table, because no one is going to protect the interests of the people of Los Angeles more than the people who represent the city of Los Angeles. So, I want to thank you all for your hard work and for your diligence and getting the job done.
Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just, I just wanted to thank our representatives on the MTA board, in particular, Mr. Viragosa, Mr. Ludlow, Mr. Labange, you were there too. I really appreciate the fact that you guys, you guys did a very gutsy thing. You went to court to challenge something, not knowing what the outcome would be, and when the court removed the shackles, you guys got it done. And I can't tell you how much of a difference you've made to everybody in this city, whether you are transit dependent or not. Everybody's lives have been improved, and my hat's off to you guys. Thank you very much.
Ms. Gruehl.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. I just want to add congratulations as well to my colleagues, Mr. Viragosa, Mr. Ludlow, Mr. Labange, who, who really took the bull by the horns and resolved this, and as Mr. Reyes said, this impacts so many of our communities, and particularly in the San Fernando Valley, the distances and the distances from everyone else's district as well. This was not an easy issue, it impacted the entire city, and not only those that ride our, our public transportation, but those that share the freeways. And I just want to say thank you to our, our leadership here who have been really instrumental, and I know worked night and day to not only be at the table but to solve this problem. So, congratulations, our, our hats off to you.
Mr. Ludlow.
Thank you, members. Just to, to close, I wanted to say that, be aware that council members Viragosa and Labange and I and the mayor, Hahn, aren't done. There still is not an agreement with the
There still is not an agreement with the, with the operators, with the bus drivers. And so I think all of us as council members, and, and I think Tom said it best, you know, this is gonna still require everybody to feel a little painful, feel a little pain. We've got to make sure that the bus drivers can reach an agreement. They went out in solidarity with the mechanics. We're gonna continue to push and encourage the MTA and the leadership of UTU to reach an agreement very, very quickly on their items, because we don't need any more work stoppages, we don't need another day lost on the transit system. And so, members, just stay tuned. We have still a lot of work to do to bring all of this to a final resolution and ultimately get the, the UTU and the MTA to reach an agreement. But again, thank you for your words of, of support and appreciation, but I agree with Antonio, that your willingness to support this motion was a very compelling issue. I think members of the board of the MTA felt the city of Los Angeles is present in a great way and knew that today was a day that the second largest city in the country was gonna send a message that this item needed to come to an immediate halt and get these parties back to work. So again, members, thank you all so much. Let's continue to work as we have in unity and make sure that we bring this to a final resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ludlow. Other members wishing to be heard on this item? If not, as Mr. Ludlow mentioned, he does have a motion to receive and file this item. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That is received and filed. Next item, please.
Item number 48 calls special inasmuch as there are cards from the public.
Item 48 now before us, and the council calls forward Ms. Sylvia Lynn Hawkins.
Representing from District Number Seven. Item number 48, planning and committee meeting is not enough. Each City Hall must take care of their own city and not co-depend on Los Angeles City Hall Council. To take care of your city bills or if your city is broke, I believe you must go to a higher source like the Senate, the U.S. Representative or House member and not the Los Angeles City Hall. We must close down every City Hall that is broken in California and move to the next City Hall that can supply the needs of that city people. Reality, real estate, insurance companies are out of business in the market form. If City Hall buildings, police building, ambulance buildings are in debt, the building is lost, so why are we charging higher costs to the public people and traffic tickets, court costs, health net bills? My question is, where is the money going? If it's to bombs, is it overseas or is it in the United States of America? I visited VA Building on Wilshire, our veteran building. Of all our soldiers, I looked at the people and they was drugged out, and the building was basically empty. I believe that this building must not be redeveloped. It is not necessary, and because of tourists that are now taking over this veteran building from overseas in USA. The people are not aware that they have destroyed our Pearl Harbor soldiers and placed them in the streets and in rescue mission to die as though they have won Pearl Harbor War and the war that is now going on. The guerrillas will not take over our buildings, our schools, our city, courts and government and move here from overseas and hurt their people. They say that they are aidless, that they believe in ruling over the people without one vote, one nation, one reform, and the people vote is nothing.
Thank you.
We do not, okay, I have 34 seconds, sir. We do not believe that this, that Democrat, I'm a Democrat, and I do not believe that one vote count. All this laughter that you're doing in here is unnecessary. If United States of America be bombed, whichever state, we take up for 50 states. Now, we are aware that the guerrillas are here from overseas, and they will not rule nor church form or party. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment for item 48. Are there members wishing to be heard on item 48? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, there is a special one that has been distributed to the council members, moved by Councilmember Parks, segmented by Council President Padilla, and the city attorney will speak to the findings.
Before we take up special one, let me recognize Councilmember Labange.
Mr. President, it's, all right, number 47, I'd like to ask for reconsideration on 47.
Okay, members' motion for reconsideration of item 47, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Forty-seven now back before us, and let's welcome Ms. Han for a few words on item 47.
Thank you, members. I know this is sort of a perfunctory thing, is to adopt the mayor's resolution on declaring a local emergency in our city, but I was actually at ground zero this morning, so I wasn't able to be here when we brought that up. I just want to take the opportunity to say it was an important thing that our mayor took the first step to declare the community of Watts as a, as a local disaster emergency area. It was the first thing in a long line of processes that will eventually get help and relief to the people who were most impacted by this storm. I still think there's a perception, really, in the whole city of Los Angeles, so we can't believe that this happened. Most areas of the city didn't even get rainfall Wednesday night, but the community of Watts got hail, got thunder, they got lightning, and worse of all, got flash flood. And what we're finding out now is some of that water was contaminated by sewage, so we've got possible health risks happening in this community. People's carpets are still soggy. We've got about 34 to 40 people a night that are still in a Red Cross shelter in this community, so people are not even able to go back and sleep in their own homes. The governor, probably the last, one of the last acts of Governor Davis, he came down and also declared it a state emergency. We're now asking President Bush to also declare it an emergency, which will also sort of release help, assistance, and funds to the people who most needed it. I want to take this opportunity to thank our city departments, Public Works, Street Services, Lot Cleaning, DWP, our Fire Department, our Police Department, our Emergency Preparedness Department. We had everybody really still, every day, going door-to-door in this community, finding out who's been damaged, who needs help. We've really been helping people. We carted away 34 to 35 truckloads of debris this weekend, our lot clearing. They came and told people, they just put it out on the curb, their, their wet carpet, their ruined furniture, their soggy mattresses. We would actually help take it away and dump it for them. So we really responded to this emergency. There's a lot more that needs to be done, and I know you're all gonna be there tomorrow night for our city council meeting in Watts, and you'll be able to see for yourself and talk to some of the residents that have been hardest hit by this disaster. If anybody's watching today, I do want to take this opportunity to give out the Red Cross emergency number. If you've been impacted by this flood, call the Red Cross. They can immediately help you with new mattresses, they can immediately help you with dry clothes, they can immediately help you to replace some of the food that you lost because of the power outage. They're even helping people replace their refrigerators. So call the Red Cross right now. They're treating this like any other disaster or emergency in this, in the state of California, and they're there to help. But long-term, our building and safety department is trying to find out who's suffered structural damage and that we can begin trying to piece together long, long-term help so that people can rebuild their lives in Watts. But thank you very much for all of your help. We still need help. Come see me, and I'll let you know what you can do to help. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Han, and we look forward to that council meeting tomorrow in the Watts area. Other members wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, let's reopen the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That is approved, and let's send this item forthwith to the mayor. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Can we reconsider item 46 to make a technical change?
Okay, members, motion to reconsider item 46. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Item 46 now back before us.
These are just the dates for the summer recess for next year, colleagues. I was asked to make this change to, so that it's more accurate. Tuesday, August 24, 2004, through Friday, September 3, 2004, would be the dates of the summer recess for next year. And so that's so we wouldn't have to come back in session for one week prior to Labor Day.
Okay, thank you very much. With that amending motion for item 46, other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, let's reopen the roll on item 46 as amended. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please. Believe we were getting ready for a special one. Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will recite the facts as presented to me by the maker of the motion for the council's consideration of the adequacy of the findings. Since the posting of today's agenda, Governor Schwarzenegger signed an executive order repealing the tripling of the vehicle license fee. Immediate action is required to expeditiously review the impact of the city's estimated loss of $150 million in revenue as a result of the executive order. Pursuant to the government code, council must first determine whether there is a need to take immediate action and that the need for action came to the attention of council after the posting of today's agenda. If such a finding is made, council may then consider this substantive motion.
Okay. On the findings, members wishing to be heard on the findings? Seeing none, let's open the roll on the findings, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Special one now before us on the motion itself. Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm gonna ask Mr. Fujioka and Mr. Deaton to give us an update. As we've had in the last month or so, many briefings about the current status of our budget, the state budget, and what the expectation might be as the new administration comes in place. As we saw on television in vivid color yesterday, the governor fulfilled his campaign promise and, and basically removed the vehicle license fee from the budget, which amounts to about $4 billion. I think it's important at this time that both Mr. Fujioka and Mr. Deaton give us an update of what they perceive will be the impact on this year's budget and one year out, which we'll begin to start working on towards the end of this year. And so we asked him to come up and make that presentation at this time.
Mr. President, members of the council, I think it'd be important to, yesterday, the governor, by executive order, indicated that the method by which the original trigger on the VLF was done improperly and by exec, and he was in fact reversing it. He also called for a special session of the legislature for two items, one of which was to, extraordinary session of legislature in part to restore funding to the current state budget for the VLF offset. Currently in the budget, the VLF offset has an appropriation of $1,000. This because they anticipated the collection of the $4 billion, so there is no backfill included in the, in the state budget for the $4 billion that will not be collected. Discussing this with the, some of the league staff yesterday, we decided that, that what is actually being done at the state is a giant game of musical chairs, and there's just entirely too few chairs. Somebody is gonna be sitting on the ground when this is all over and done with.
We just passed out a memo that to both, we're sending it both to the mayor and your council, titled "The Impact of Vehicle License Fees." This memo, you know, briefly states that, I think as you know, we lost $45 million earlier this year. What's at jeopardy as a consequence of the governor's action yesterday is additional 105 for a total of $150 million. The only, the, the one major frustration we have is the absence of any information from either the, the transition team or the, well, the governor's transition team or the governor's office itself regarding how they intend to backfill this money. What we've heard is that it may come from the proceeds of the bond sale. Well, that must first be approved by the voters in March, and then subsequently, you know, with the required paperwork and, and even the fact of issuing a $20 billion bond is extraordinary, and we don't think that in itself is a viable option. They'll have to break it up into smaller parts. It's highly probable we will not get the money this year. So what we're faced at, what we're looking at now is an additional, at minimum, $105 million cut to existing, to our existing budget to finish this year with a reasonable balance and reasonable reserve fund. That will equate to some significant service cuts. It's also gonna equate to some very, very difficult decisions that we'll be bringing to your, to your council and onto the mayor.
This, this is on top of the already, already enormous deficit that we have that continues to grow as, as time goes on, since Mr. Fujioka and I last before council on this issue. It appears that our cost for pension retirements is gonna go up at least another $50 million next year, so the deficit continues to, our own, if you will, in-house deficit continues to grow without this assistance and this, let's say, even a larger cloud over our, our fiscal situation.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Parks, for your leadership on, on this issue. I was wondering if we might be able to attach a friendly amendment, Mr. Parks, to this? Just if we could reiterate our, our call to the governor and the legislature to make sure that we get that backfill, and if it's not done through the bonding, through some other means, just if we can make that reiteration, this is a friendly amendment, if that's okay to attach? Okay, great, thank you. I would, I would then move that we attach. Have we passed something before on this? Do you know if we take this as official position? Will we reiterate our call then? I think it was before to have the vehicle license fee not repealed, now that it has been repealed, to make certain that there will be, that these revenues will be backfilled by some other means, but not limited to bonding that the state is currently looking at.
With due respect, I wouldn't mention the bonding, because the bonding is an absolute one-time backfill. They can only do it once.
Let's not have bonding then at all.
We should characterize it as a permanent source of, of revenue for our backfill.
All right, so from a permanent source then, let's, let's reiterate that call.
Thank you.
Ms. Zakowski.
Thank you, Mr. Fujioka, Mr. Deaton. One, I think it's interesting in the, the two-page memo that you put together, Mr. Fujioka, that you indicate that the vehicle license fee was originally an unsecured property tax that really dates back in terms of state preemption to create uniformity to the 1930s. And since the 1930s, local government has been able to be dependent on this, on and off with various formulas, but it has always been there as a recognition of making the cities whole. And so it truly would be a dramatic change, however, it has been fluctuating to really say for the first time since the 1930s, local government, you can no longer depend on this, and the state doesn't worry about it. The other thing I'd like to ask, Mr. Deaton, you talked about, well, this is an additional 150, and you mentioned that our pension and health care costs are rising to the tune of what amount?
Well, we, the recalculated health benefits for retirees, and I think the dollar amount went up. We had anticipated a $45 million increase, a $45 million increase next year. It appears it's gonna be closer to 95. So that's just one thing that's happened in the last 30 days.
And that, so, so in the last 30 days, and actually in the last day, there's an additional $45 million on health care costs, there's an additional 150 that is not able to be secured or guaranteed as we know today from vehicle license fee. And that's on top of, what deficit are we carrying this year as you're looking, what's our current deficit?
In our last financial status report, we identified a minimum deficit level of about 185. Your CLA added some other very reasonable, I'll characterize them as problems, which should take it to 232. But that is, that does not include the money we need for MICLAD debt service and some other, and our TMLD costs, some other legally mandated costs, and so we can easily be at the 275 level, very easily, without this VLF impact.
Okay, so that's 275, roughly 180 to 280, somewhere as of going into next year, before we knew about these two things, which are additional 150 and additional 50. So, members, these numbers become mind-boggling. They also become numbing in a way we're not aware of them, but I did want to mention what we're talking about is in addition to already... But I did want to mention what we're talking about is, in addition to already dire, significant, serious efforts that we are taking steps and we were trying to manage, it's going to get to a point very, very quickly if we're not there today, that management... I'm not going to know how we're going to look at these two people here who represent us to come up with management mechanisms that are going to get us through this, not only the rest of this year, as we look forward to next year and thereafter. It's serious, serious... I mean, I don't even know the words we can use anymore. Belt tightening doesn't quite do it. It may be a serious revamping of government as we know it. As we know, we already are talking to our different union reps throughout the city because this is something we are going to have to do together, and it's the crisis and proportion of cuts and deficit that we have not ever seen before. And it's going to be an interesting new world, but we just have to be constantly aware of it. I'm not sure that we can have a special every day or once a week, but this is not going to go away. It is real, and we have to obviously discipline ourselves to handle it from here on out.
Just comment on that. Just to kind of put it in perspective, the... If you add the entire library department, entire recreation department, Recreation and Parks Department together, you're probably talking 150 to 160 million dollars. And if you were to cut them entirely. So just to give you an idea of the magnitude of a 250 to 400 million dollar problem, it would take two library systems and two Wreck-It Parks systems, and you'd still have a deficit.
Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it, Mr. Fujioka, Mr. Deaton, and your remarks, and Mr. Parks. One thing I want to ask, because there was just some people talked about this here, and I know this is just a small issue, but street paving, we've reduced our miles because of this, correct?
Yes.
Why, don't we own the pavers?
Maybe the machines?
We own the machines.
Equipment?
We own the machines. We own the asphalt machines.
Yes, we do.
We make our own asphalt.
Yes.
And the cost is the labor that does the work on the street, or what?
Which is true.
Well, I just want to make sure, members, I know we're going to go through a real tough time, and I was just a young council aide in 1978 when there was the first major restructuring of municipal government due to the passage of Proposition 13. And many, many things happened at that time to restructure. But I just don't want to see us cut the services that the people want to show the people that we're going to cut these things. I want to make sure we lay out for us to make the decisions where we think what limited money we have to go to serve the people. Because I think there's certain things that have happened over the course of time that people make decisions on based on trying to keep a status quo on that. This is a new day. It's obviously going to be difficult, but I really think we have to look at these issues to make sure that we're fair to the people that we represent. Because I've known in the past, there's been decisions they've made based on, you take it away, take away what people see. And if we own pavers, and if we own the asphalt, you know, I want to make sure that our priorities should be in that simple area. This is one of many areas after public safety that I think are real important as we make these deliberations. But I appreciate you bringing them forth. But what's the term you use, Mr. Smith? Basing... How you base the budget? I like that. Zero-based budgeting, which I think is something we have to look at if we want to serve the people as they want us to be served. And then also, at the same time, does the public... Mr. Deaton, I'll ask this question. Does the public have a good knowledge of the wide variety of sources that we get our revenues from? And do they have a good knowledge of the wide variety of where the money goes so that they know this? I think it's always important, either through our neighborhood councils or others, to inform that aspect. Do you know that? Is there a simple one sheet to those?
We can put together that, but my reaction is that very few... For example, I do not believe that even at this stage of the discussion, it's just becoming clear to a lot of people in the state that vehicle license fee actually goes to support counties and cities and not... Is not really a state revenue source. That it... That in fact, that, given even 12 months of discussion on this issue, that it is only now becoming more clear to some people where the money goes and what it's used for.
But you... Mr. Jensen up at the county said something in the paper today. Did you read that today?
No.
He spoke of maybe even challenging the state based on what you just said, Mr. Deaton. What do you think about that?
Challenging?
Yeah.
There may be a serious...
Never challenged the Terminator, but I'm not... Challenging them to what?
No, to the fact that it is local revenue.
Oh, right. And there's a constitutional amendment that provided that vehicle license fee is exclusively the counties and the cities, to the extent there is any, and the state has cut it. It has been, as Councilwoman Sikowski indicated, it's been a city and county revenue source for 75 years. And all that notwithstanding, it's a $4 billion problem for us. As the senator from Illinois said sometime, some 50 years ago, a billion here and a billion there, and pretty soon you're talking about real money.
Talking about real money, yeah. All right. Thank you, Mr. President.
There probably will be some legal challenges, if not by our...
Probably.
You know, probably. That's like saying the sun's going to rise. But there will be legal challenges towards this action, but concurrently, we still have to address the problem.
Right.
And even if this problem disappears, one needs to know we have our own serious problems caused by the local economy.
Last question. Is somebody watching this daily, Mr. Fujioka?
Absolutely.
Okay.
A lot of people with eyes everywhere.
All right. I want to make sure. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, I've had the experience of these past Saturdays, meeting with constituents in my district. And this past week was Victor Heights, and the constituents here was... They were flabbergasted. They were astonished at the degree and the depth of how this problem is becoming in terms of our ability to deliver services. And it just seems to me that once we get that clarity, once we are able to start painting a picture, as bleak as it is now when we start talking about details, or even in a very general way, that we inform our neighborhood councils, that we inform the citizenry what's before us. I don't believe they understand that we literally have... Would have to lop off whole departments to deal with that subject matter and zero-based These are details that the citizenry needs to know. Our constituents need to understand how deep this problem is, and they're shocked. When I shared with them what the vehicle license fee means and how it subsidizes and how it works for our LAPD, for our fire department, they were just astonished. So there's a gap. There's a significant gap of understanding in terms of what the negative impacts are, how we're going to affect services. And we should be using our built-in networks, Channel 35, our neighborhood councils, every opportunity we have to share this information. So when we start making decisions and we start talking about, God forbid, increasing fees, that we do it together because it's going to be... And I'll be real blunt about this, political suicide to talk about which area you start increasing fees with, or which services need to be charged. And we start assessing not only the cutting of services, but the expansion of our revenue base. Those become the real hard issues that the public should understand. We need to inform our citizenry of how deep and how bad it really is. Otherwise, it's going to be much harder to deliver the quality of life that we like to deliver. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Other members wishing to be heard on special one? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That is approved. Forthwith, please.
Thank you.
Next item.
This is the time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda.
And seeing no requests for general public comment for today, today's public comment period is closed. Next item, please.
Do you wish to clear the desk before going into closed session?
Let's do housekeeping.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Motion shall be posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Perry requests to be excused the first Friday of each month for city business, and that would be for 2004, and that meets council policy.
Okay. Excuse is granted.
Councilmember Miss Sikowski requests to be excused for personal business Wednesday, November 19th, and that also meets council policy.
Ms. Sikowski's excused.
Councilmember Gru requests to be excused Tuesday, November 25th, and Wednesday, November 26th for personal business. That meets council policy.
Another excuse granted.
Councilmember Cardenas requests to be excused Friday, December 5th for city business. That meets council policy.
Mr. Cardenas is excused.
And that clears the desk for closed session.
Thank you very much. In conformance with California law, the council will now adjourn into closed session. Sargent, please clear the chambers. Madam Clerk, item before us, please.
There is a special two before council. The city attorney will speak to the findings.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will recite the facts as presented to me by the maker of the motion for the council's consideration of the adequacy of the findings. Since the posting of today's agenda, Burbank Police Officer Matthew Pavelka was killed, and Officer Gregory Campbell was wounded by armed suspects, one of which was a suspected Los Angeles resident. Immediate action is required and requested by the police department for this reward offer. Pursuant to the government code, council must first determine whether there is a need to take immediate action and that the need for action came to the attention of council after the posting of today's agenda. If such a finding is made, council may then consider this substantive motion.
All right. We've heard the findings. Anyone have any questions or want to speak on the findings? Seeing none, let's open the roll on considering the matter. Special two before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
All right. Special two is now before us. Let me recognize Councilmember Padilla.
Thank you, Madam Chair, both for recognizing me and for seconding the motion. Colleagues, some people are certainly aware of the incident, and I know, Mr. Zine, you want to lead the adjourning motions in recognition of a fallen officer. I brought in the motion today to request a reward for the information leading to the apprehension and prosecution of David A. Garcia. As you've watched the news, David Garcia is the subject of an intense manhunt for his alleged role in the murder of a Burbank police officer, Matthew Pavelka, and the serious wounding of Burbank police officer Gregory Campbell. While the crime took place in the city of Burbank, and there was questions about the legality of us offering a reward, we did check with our city attorney, we did check with the Los Angeles Police Department, and the Burbank Police Department is not only well-aware but supportive of our action today, they do believe this could help in their investigation and search for the alleged gunman. Because of the nature of the crime against law enforcement officials and the nature of the crime and the past record of the individual, I think while he remains at large, he continues to pose a unique and extreme threat to the public safety in the Los Angeles area overall, not just in the city of Burbank. We believe he has previously, if not currently, resided in the city of Los Angeles, therefore making it our concern. The residents, neighbors, anybody he can conceivably come into contact with is our concern. In addition, by taking this action today, I think we can demonstrate that Los Angeles stands in solidarity with the grieving members of the Burbank Police Department and the entire Burbank family and community. I would ask for your eye vote on this reward motion.
All right. And is the city attorney wanting to read slight technical correction into the record?
Thank you, Madam President. Just for the record, the administrative code section to which we are referencing is Section 19.121 subdivision A, which allows this reward offer.
Thank you for that correction. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? We've heard Mr. Padilla indicate the issue and why it's important and relevant to the city of Los Angeles. Seeing no one else wishing to speak, let's open the roll on the reward motion. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. We will send it forthwith. Is there anything else remaining on the desk?
That clears the desk, Madam President.
All right. Are there any announcements?
Thank you. I just wanted to remind everybody that tomorrow night, we're holding our council meeting. It's a historic time, first time in the history of Los Angeles, we've held the city council meeting in Watts. The meeting is going to be at the Watts Community Labor Action Committee at 109th and Central. It's called The Center. You can't miss it. We're going to start our council meeting at 5:30, and if anybody wants to come early, we're going to have barbecue, we're going to have food. We're inviting the community to come early. We're going to actually have some of our city departments set up to talk to people, particularly those people who have been hit hard by the recent storm. We're actually going to give tours of the community and tours of Watts Towers. If no one's ever seen that before, that's always a great treat. So come tomorrow for the first time in the history of Los Angeles, the city council meeting is coming to Watts.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Any other announcements? Mr. Labange.
Thank you. At the Los Angeles Convention Center in the next three days is a conference called Partners in Stewardship. It's a national conference with park advocates from all levels of government, and I passed this around to all members so you could share it. I was there this morning to greet them and welcome them on behalf of the city and all of us. But I would just say, some of your deputies may want to go down there. They had a lot of information tables. For any information, call Manuel Molina, his office, our general manager. But I think it's a worthy conference to stop by because public lands and the stewardship of those public lands are so important and the partnerships that we create. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr. Reyes.
President, tonight is the... It's on Friday, but tonight we review the final scenario for the Taylor Yards, the 40 acres. I just want to take this time to thank Wreck-It Parks Director Manuel Molina and his staff for their hard work, the state parks for their cooperation and flexibility. It's going to be great. We're going to have three to four soccer fields, two baseball diamonds, a few basketball courts and tennis courts, and 20 acres of open space right near the river. It's a tremendous use and an area that really needs it, and I just want to thank everybody, and hopefully they're there tonight at the Cypress Park Reg Center. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have several announcements for the 8th District. Tonight, between 6:00 and 7:00 p.m., the Friends of the High Park Library will be meeting at the library at 6527 Crenshaw Boulevard. On Thursday evening, November 20th, Crenshaw High School is playing their second ballgame under the lights and will beat another 15th District school, San Pedro. We beat Locke recently. Now we'll beat San Pedro, so Mrs. Hahn owes me a lunch for that, so we'll compound it with this. And that's at the Crenshaw High School at 7:00 p.m. on Thursday. Also on Saturday, November 22nd, the 8th District is cosponsoring a free health clinic with Dr. Parrott, who's the founder of The Real Men's Cook, and there'll be free prostate cancer screening. We're encouraging all men over the age of 40 to come in and get the confidential screening. It's one of the largest reasons for death in the black community, and that's November 22nd, 10:00 a.m. to 3:00, at the Consolidated Realty Board at 3725 Don Felipe. And then also Saturday, the USC Trojans will continue their move towards a national championship playing against a small school on the West Side.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. If there are no other announcements, let's please stand for adjourning motions. And Mr. Zine has asked to be recognized first. Let me recognize Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Madam President, and I'm sure my colleagues will all join me in this. Adjourning in memory of Police Officer Matthew Pavlek, 26 years of age, Burbank Police Officer. Joined the Burbank Police Department after stint in the United States Air Force. Burbank Police Officer for 10 months prior to his death on November 15th. Recurriculately wounded during a gun battle after a routine traffic stop. Officer died during surgery at Providence St. Joseph's Medical Center from multiple gunshot wounds to his chest. He is the son of Los Angeles Police Detective Mike Pavlek, a 29-year veteran of the Valley Bureau's detective squad. Matthew was born in West Hills and grew up in Simi Valley. While in the military, he attended college, receiving an associate arts degree in criminal justice. He planned on continuing education for his bachelor's degree. Loved motorcycles, skydiving, and watching San Francisco Fortininer games. "Matt was the greatest son a father could have," quote, said his father, Mike. He'll be greatly missed by all, his family, friends, and colleagues. friends, colleagues in law enforcement. He is survived by his parents Billy Sue, Mike Pavlek and brother Nick. In addition, his partner, Greg Campbell, is in serious but stable condition and he suffered multiple gunshot wounds during the gun battle. And an additional officer responding to that scene, Randy Lloyd, a motorcycle officer, was en route and crashed en route to the help call. He is in stable condition with numerous broken bones. And may Matthew Pavlek rest in peace.
Thank you.
All members.
We'll have all members as part of that. Other tributes? Mr. Ludlow.
Chair, the members I asked that we adjourn in memory of Earl Batty. Earl Batty was an all-star catcher for the Minnesota Twins. He was regarded as one of baseball's best catchers during the 1960s. He was a Los Angeles native, graduated from Jordan High School and was a four-year letterman in both baseball and basketball, which is a rare feat for LAUSD. He died of cancer on Saturday in Akala, Florida at the age of 68. He survived by three sons, Earl Junior, Corey and Darren, two daughters, Brenda and Barbara, and a host of grandchildren. He began his career as an amateur free agent with the Chicago White Sox in 1955. And in 1960, he joined the Washington Senators the year before they moved to Minnesota as the Twins. He was an American League All-Star in 1962, 63, 65 and 66, and he won the Golden Glove Award three times. He stayed with the Twins until he retired in 1967. Just three years ago, he was chosen as a catcher for the Twins' 40th anniversary all-team, all-time team. And he was the uncle of my chief of staff, Ed Sanders.
Thank you, Mr. Ludlow. Any other tributes? If not, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Council is adjourned.
I just want to note that our ITGS meeting will begin at, let's say, 1:20.